Just gotta walk around with it in my hand.
Okay, sorry.
Good to go.
Once again.
Claims dusty.
So we temporarily fixed the two slips from flooding on Jackson's boat and tapped up and full width of travel until we hear the beamer. Cruising mode roadside each district, auto machines still patching pot holes, crews have been spraying road signs, posts, garden rails. Truck nineteen, big rig replaced the clutch for us and it's back in use. Truck eighteen is getting a new motor. It's almost finished. We had a few trees down this weekend. Our new mechanic started today. Last thing I got, I got you all copied my new inspection contract. And if you look on the second page down here in the yellow columns. This is our total price of the contract. This is twenty percent part of the match. And right now we just need approval on this. If you're okay with it, then we'll send all this in to end up for the final review. And they'll send everything back to us.
Our match is the forty-one.
Yeah.
Fifty-five pieces.
Yeah. And last year this was, I think, a hundred and forty-eight thousand total. But the states changed our inspections from a hundred and twenty-two to a hundred and sixty-seven inspection. Now is why these prices have increased. From the lot for previous forty years to this one. They've added a whole bunch of new guidebooks. Want to get inspected.
Did you already have this allocated?
Yes, I do. That'll come out like.
Um, switching gears. I know Antioch's delayed because of the project that's going on. My understanding is since that's done, they're moving a little bit down the road.
Yeah.
Will that delay Antioch?
Yeah, because it's got two unofficial detours on it. The one they're doing now, which I think is already supposed to be finished.
Yeah.
As soon as it's done, they'll move right to the end of the French, and then there's a second detour on Antioch. It'll be Antioch only because you won't be able to use it.
Yeah. And can we start striping the sites or the roads or what's the, I was asked about that over the week.
So we got our paint strippers.
Yeah.
Uh, we haven't paid for the second half of it yet. We've had some problems with it. Uh, we got all of them fixed except for one. It's got a leak in the oil reservoir for the hydraulics. They wasn't gonna send nobody down to fix it. They was gonna call a local place, and I thought we could take it all and fix it ourselves. So that's what we're doing. We got it tore down today. So hopefully we get this last fix done.
Yeah, and they weren't complaining. They were just, just asking.
Yeah, we gotta watch the strikes.
Yeah. All right, I'll make a motion to approve contract and counties match total of forty-one thousand fifty-seven dollars and sixty-one cents. I'll say, all in favor.
No, we don't have sign anything until once the end of approved all this, I'll send us back the contract.
Do again? No. Old business, KDH, Norton's contract for the medical building.
I put that on there because I didn't know exactly where we were with that.
You're still back and forth. Yeah, Maureen. I sent you some notes I had, and we can talk about those, and then we can send them back at the counter. Because there's some, there's some things I recommend that we counter on. Okay, I'm in there now. You didn't move. Oh, yeah, the vegan medical building. We can go through those at a certain time, and then I can give it back to them. But there's some things, when I'm looking at their contract, it seems like they prepared the lease, and a lot of this stuff is under Kentucky law. And so I think that's where some of this stuff, some of it's minor, but then other things, it's just a determination for us to make sure. But we, we've lost a month. It's not directed at anyone. It's not a fault. Uh, I'm assuming that we go, go back and collect that extra, I think it was an increase of twenty-five percent. The other thing about the contract is it contemplates a couple of things I wasn't quite comfortable with, I wanted us to be fully aware of. But it basically allowed them to automatically renew and then reset the rate at an objective standard that they choose first, and then we would choose somebody else to choose an objective standard. That may be beneficial, but it also removes our ability to control. And then I prefer, I prefer us to have a little bit more control over setting the rates and maybe the increase. Yeah, every year. Yeah, we don't, we don't build, we went from nineteen forty a month to twenty-four eighty-three, twenty-five. We'll just take. Yeah. New business, Karen, she's not here. This has to do with redistricting.
Cindy's here in her place if you.
Yeah, I guess Cindy, you wanna? Yeah, then I'll read. Is this Constitution, the thirtieth?
Yes, yes. Um, we've been notified by the state that this has to be done over a ten year, over ten years. So this is redistricting for a county across the board. So we were told by the state that we have a couple of areas that are heavily, more heavily populated than before. So they have gone through and separated it out the best that they possibly could. And it's going to affect a couple of precincts, which would be the cot, in the cotton townships and in Jefferson Township. We would have one additional section for precincts, so it'd go to Cotton, one, two, and three. In Jefferson Township, we'll be going into four splits now instead of just the three that they originally had. This affects our precinct commitment. It won't affect anybody else we don't believe. Karen actually did the digging on this, so that's why I'm a little hesitant on some of this stuff. Um, but the, the state is pushing now that we do redistrict follow-through because the population is increasing those areas.
So when I, when I met with Karen, she had redone this, and she and I agreed on this map, which is available in your office.
Yes.
For people to come down and look at.
Yeah, be the clerk.
Then it doesn't affect elected county council.
It does or doesn't?
No, it does not.
That's not, okay.
We will not kick them out of their areas.
I didn't think so, but I wasn't.
One of them did, one map did. We agreed on this map, so that didn't affect the elected official.
Okay.
It only redistricted population within their areas.
Yeah, so what they, we would have to have the, I guess it would be each of the precinct chair people would have to represent. If it is approved, they'd have to represent and vote on someone to be in there as a trust.
As the party chair.
Party chair, yeah.
I read this entire thing. Uh, you can't really. It's just at this point, they're gonna address and actually formally adopt the ordinance at the next meeting. Anybody's welcome to go and review those things there, and we'll make sure.
Yeah, go ahead. We'll have this available, map, whatever else we're needing to.
Didn't want to put it off. Do you want to put it on the site now?
Yes.
So I have to go.
Not quite. She's just wanting to get a few more things. I was hoping that. She could put it, she has access to her site, to the county website now, so she could put that on there. I don't know about the map, if you could.
I don't.
Condense that anyway, but.
Have to come down and view.
We might be able to do the, the two sections.
Yeah, if you just did Jefferson and.
Well, yeah.
Individual.
Yeah, the rest of it doesn't matter. Nothing else changed. Yeah, if you could screenshot, you have to send it to Cotton, show the difference.
And the state will be the ones who send the information as to who goes where, the people, the voters, yeah, so they'll be the ones to separate. So we won't really, they'll just notify who the people are.
Thank you.
Good evening. I came to ask for a part-time position in my office. I'm not asking for money. The funds will come from my eleven eighty-nine account, which the only money that's deposited into that account is money made in my office. So I just wanted for scanning books and try to get a head start. We were doing it when we had three people. Now that we're down to two, we got our hands full with other stuff, so I'd like to get a part-time rent. Um, I did a price for a company to come in and scan the books that we need scanned in, scanned in yet, and we're looking at a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I figure if I can go month by month and pay somebody to, to at least knock some of those books out, it might help, you know.
And you fully fund this out of your own?
Completely out of the eleven eighty-nine, no general. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yvette from the treasurer's office.
Hello. I gave you all a couple of packages of information. I did not send this to, to Karen, so I don't know if I need to do that or not, but anyway, I have been working on trying to learn how to invest the county's money a little bit better and make some more, more interest coming in. And I called Baker Tilly, Paige, who have, they, she helped us, her company helped us with the ARPA money um, back in twenty twenty-one. And we were able to, you know, get the two point eight million dollars that we got. So anyway, I've seen her a few times in some of my training classes, and I reached out to her. So she sent over the packets and some other information. So she came down to speak to you all a little bit more in depth, some other information, but she has a, has it broke down into two scopes of work, a financial plan and budget analysis and assistance. So I let her take over. It's in regard also to the, you know, the Senate bill one that's coming down the pike.
And you're with Baker Tilly.
Yes. So I'm Paige Sansone with Baker Tilly. I'm located out of the Indianapolis office, but we do a lot of work down in the south here. In fact, we work a lot with Ohio County. Um, so I presented two scopes of services, or I sent it over at the beginning of May. One is a comprehensive financial plan, and the other is for budget assistance and support. I'd really like to start with the comprehensive financial plan because I think in my view, that's the most important item right now, especially in light of Senate Bill One. I'm sure you've heard about that, that just recently passed. There is going to be wide sweeping changes in our deductions. I'm leaving some information for you, by the way, that summarizes the changes, but um, there are going to be impacts to your net assessed value, um, which could lower assessed values and conversely increase your property tax rates. Um, so while taxpayers are getting a deduction and the amount that's taxable to them, the tax rate could actually be going up. So we are working on an internal model at Baker Tilly to try to work in all of those pieces just to determine the exact impact to not only the taxpayer, but also to the county unit. Preliminary numbers show that you could see a reduction in your property tax revenue of probably about a hundred and seventy thousand by the time we reach twenty twenty-eight. But we know that these things are getting phased in over a five-year period, so actually twenty thirty-one is when you're gonna see the most impact. But we do see some impact starting as early as twenty twenty-six, so that's gonna create a bit of a budget challenge. So what we're doing for a lot of counties in the state is something called a comprehensive financial plan. So really what it is, is we look at your major operating funds. Here you have thirteen major operating funds. Um, and we look at historical, so we'll have three years of historical information, twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-four, so you can see kind of how you've been performing in the past. And then we're gonna look at twenty twenty-five and then four years beyond that. So this is going to be very beneficial to you as you go into the budget process because by the, it'll take us about four to six weeks to complete this. But you will have, once we complete this, all of your estimated revenues for budget year twenty twenty-six. So that's gonna streamline your budget process, but also beyond. So whatever things you add to the budget or changes you make to the budget, we can see how it's going to impact future budget years. Um, so that's primarily the thing that we'd be doing. Because Senate Bill One just passed, we are gonna work in our estimated changes in net assessed value, your tax rate. Um, the local income tax, that's another huge change that, that we will work into this analysis. You may not be aware of this, but all the current local income tax that you know of today will expire at the end of twenty twenty-seven. You have certified shares, you have public safety, I think you have PSAP for the dispatch, you have economic development. All of that expires at the end of twenty twenty-seven. In its place, you, the county unit, will be able to adopt a one point two percent local income tax. So we can build that into the model to determine how much you should expect to receive, because now you have to take that one point two percent and fund what you're currently funding from the PSAP, the public safety, the economic development. You'll have to shift all those costs to the general fund. So big changes. So this plan is gonna help you map out those changes. The new local income tax doesn't start until twenty twenty-eight, but it's good to start planning now. There's gonna be some other local income tax that, that you'll be able to adopt for other units. It's kind of strange. You'll be, you can adopt like a non-municipal for townships and libraries. Um, municipalities under thirty-five hundred, you can adopt, the county unit's gonna have authority to adopt that. So again, lots and lots of changes, but this plan is going to help incorporate those changes for you and help you develop a plan going forward. Um, so that was the comprehensive financial planning piece. We did include a budget services scope, whether you need it or not. It's just, we wanted you to know what we can do for you. Um, we can do budgeting from start to finish, or we can just review things that, that you prepare internally. Again, this financial plan is gonna make it easy for budget because we'll already be doing the legwork for the, especially the revenue piece of it. Um, so as part of, as part of the budget scope, what we do is we can complete forms, we can just help you through that process. We also do a budget one-on-one training, very basic training. We have a lot of councils that like for us to do that right before the budget season, just to get a refresher on net assessed values, tax rates, circuit breakers, how all that interacts and, and how all that works. Um, we also do just some other accounting support services as needed. But again, I think the big thing is this comprehensive financial plan. Um, because it really is, I should have brought an example, but I can, I can certainly email you wanted. You get a picture for each fund of where you've been the past three years and where you're going the next four or five years. Um, so I can, I'll send an example out to you, Yvette, of other counties we've done. We did one for Ohio County last year, but there's other counties around here that we've, we've worked on as well. Any questions for me?
I think it'd be beneficial.
Wait, you wanna look through the contract and have?
Try to look at it before you guys are trying to move quickly here. I can try to look at it right now, as long as nothing stands out. You want to see it? We'll just put it to the bottom for a minute.
Sure, sure.
I'll come back to it.
Thank you.
Did you ask the cost?
Of the cost. It was not, not to exceed. Yeah, I have copies.
He doesn't.
Okay.
I knew Joe didn't have one.
I was looking for my first emails. I think everything I'm getting from you is an old, and that all I get are.
Oh, you don't?
No, but they keep them full.
Oh.
January.
Okay.
Well, I'll, I'll email it to you.
Okay. The part of the financial planning step, all these, those results of the budgeting step.
First of all, let's get something. I know you guys are not responsible for this when it happened. Because it happened a while back, and you guys were all new and in the office. So I am bringing forward in the Ohio Valley Land Development on block thirty-one, lot twenty-six. And I was down here a couple of weeks ago at the offices, and I talked to Tammy Owens. Is that her name? The secretary?
Jenny.
Jenny.
Okay, Jenny Owens. I talked to her, and I asked her if she could look back and see how long it was when the road was blacktopped, and I told her to give it to you. Did you get it?
No, we never did find a year on when it was actually blacktopped.
Okay, because we got the property in five nine and fourteen at that time. And so that's when we purchased, purchased it. But when, what we purchased, the dimensions of the lot, you can't see on this map, and they're not on the aerial map that we got from the courthouse. But it's not that size now because what has happened is the county blacktopped the road straight through our property on that lot. Did you happen to go out and look?
I've, I've been there. I know where.
You know where I'm at, so you know what I'm, you know what I'm saying?
Yep.
Okay. So I'm asking if you guys want to buy that lot from us since you took it.
I do have some printouts.
Thank you.
So this lot here. Question. And when the original plat. Off here, the original plot. And then, don't pay attention to this quiet up here.
Oh. Yeah.
And I have this map too.
Yep, I got a small copy of that. There's a better picture of that.
Was there ever an easement or anything there before Dusty started?
Well, here's where, here's where it gets. So this was the original plat back in nineteen sixty-one, I think. Okay, this is lot twenty-sixth. This North Drive, this was Vista, and this North Drive originally was supposed to come up here, come down and open. This, yeah, this was never developed up here in North Drive. So what they did, they ran North Drive down Vista, then turned it back into North Big P. So whoever, the Ohio Valley Development, plotted this out, and then they went down this. And then years later, they turned all these roads over to the council.
But the county doesn't have all those roads as of now either, because some of them are not taken care of.
Well, some of them was never developed.
Right, so you're correct.
Yeah, so all the roads that was developed, the highway took them, or the county took them over.
And they are blacktopped, and there is, there is some property that had lots or a, a road, and the people had the property around it, and the county let them shut it off.
Yeah.
So it's now, see it? It's not, yeah.
But I think what happened, this was the original plat, and once all that was finished, nobody went back and redone the plat. So I drew this up here because this land is not, I'm talking about. I think when this was redone, this parcel should have been moved up here, but that's just me thinking that. I don't know. That's weird, a little bit, share the picture. Can you see the lot a little bit there? And just to make sure we're on. This is your lot.
That is correct. Yeah, when you turn it this way, this is what you see when you come up the hill. The road went around there, and it was gravel at the time, but when they blacktopped it, they took it. So see, from what I understand now, this part here is sold, was sold with part of a farm that was sold.
Well, you are kind of correct on that, but I think that was all up in here. That.
But that was also over here, so it's gone.
Like this?
See, this right here? Since that road was not there here, this road was not here at all. That was property, and it, they sold this with the farm.
Well.
He just bought.
The, the original road that come over here was Goose Creek, and that all got sold, and they took Goose Creek out and moved it over here to North Drive.
Right.
Yeah. But as far as I know, this, this is still plowed here, this section.
Yeah, because it, because this road is all gone.
Mm-hmm.
And this comes up this way.
Yeah, see this? From what I've been told, this part was never actually developed up here. And it should have been because this is what should have been North Drive.
But they didn't do it that way.
Yeah. And I don't know what's right or wrong. I've been looking, but I haven't found anything. And the trouble is, when this plat was done, it was not done in the end. It should have been replatted when all this got changed up here, but it never got done.
Teresa, did you say that you've owned it since 2014?
Yes.
And when was the last time that you were down here? When did you notice that the blacktop?
We had noticed it had been done for a while, but with circumstances of different health.
Sure.
Yeah, and everything, I mean, but I can't remember when it was blacktopped.
But it wasn't like that in 2014 when you originally?
No, not, not at that time.
Do we know when the road went? Because I know I worked there in 2018 and it was.
That, as far as I know, that road's always been there.
Just not through that lot. Right. You're right. That road was always there at that time.
See, the original, what was supposed to be planted is North Drive. Is this orange area right here, these lines?
Yeah.
This was supposed to be North Drive and it dropped back down to North Drive. This was all going to be Vista.
They missed more of the plot, sold the wrong plot?
I don't know.
I have, I just, I've been paying taxes on it. Here's my paperwork.
And they developed all this? They never finished North Drive, they just used Vista. And I think that's where everything got.
Renamed it.
Yeah, I think that's where everything got, that's the.
There for a lot of years. Vista and North Drive, same as that group.
Yes.
And when I look this up on. I'm going to change his name, break that rule right there. And all these county roads for sure. Vista and North Drive for sure.
The North Drive and Beach Street where it comes out on the, on the other side of the lot.
And when I looked this on, a flat match, nobody owns this area. That's why I drew this up here. Because if this was done by plating and it never got done, I bet her lot was supposed to be. But that's just a guess because I.
It's after beach, nobody would just cut it up.
Yeah.
Compensation. What was the cost of the lot in 14?
The cost of it? It was a different dimension. Most of the lots sold from 50 by 100 dimension. They sold for about $1,000, give or take, because a lot of them was virgin land. There was no water on them, no septic, no electric on any of it. So.
Another pair of. We would have to make sure who owns this ground. It showed nobody owns it. I mean, we could cut this road and take it where it's supposed to be. Talking. Maybe. Only $100 value in Blackside.
Well, if you guys want to leave it there, my husband and I discussed it. If you just want to buy the lot from us and keep it, you can have it.
Yeah, well, that's what I've tried.
Because I understand now it takes six lots to put a home in there. Instead of, instead of two lots, then it went to four lots, now it's six. You've got to have six lots to put a home in there. And if you get the straight lots, that's 150 by 100 square. And that's not counting if it's virgin land or somebody's already had something there or partial or whatever for septic and electric and water.
And this road also has 50 foot right away. So if you go from, it's very long, 50 feet, 50 feet, that's that much more to cut down.
I know the land development's messed up because it was only supposed to be a residential area for campers. There was not supposed to be any septic tanks put in there back in the early 60s, like he said. And the reason I know that is because my grandmother was one of the phone sales operators for the lots. That's what she had told us a long time ago.
Well, we got a lot more answers that we're going to have to get. We can have by the next meeting. Yeah. Two weeks.
Two weeks, you said?
Yeah. Two weeks is our next meeting.
Okay.
Two weeks or so. Two weeks is our next meeting.
16th, you said?
16th.
And I'll try to do the whole draw in 12, 13 days.
Dates and.
Well, like I said when I started, I know you guys didn't know anything about it because he wasn't in here at the time when it was done.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll, that'll deal. Answer better.
Um, you want my phone number or anything? Derry code 812-438-3458.
3458.
Uh-huh. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Susan Height, can you say that right?
Yes, she is in here. I just put this on the agenda. They're wanting to use the gazebo this weekend. It's a group that is going to gather there, or they want to gather there to sing, play guitars or whatever, nothing special, just a bunch of them gathering.
At the courthouse.
At the gazebo. In the gazebo. Mike Jones approached me and I told him that I would ask.
I don't have a problem with that. Before we do board and board activities, is there anybody here that wanted to? Oh, actually, we want to talk about this anyway.
Yeah. Yeah, sorry.
It's about being. The next thing we have on here is our grant. We have our first two applications from, when we pass the grant. And so basically, the grant process was put in place by last council commissioners because it was found that they couldn't just hand money.
Right. Not just hand money to NGOs, non-government organizations.
Okay.
We recently just got this application. My understanding is the application gets filled out if I read the ordinance right, but you guys approve, you are the ones that approve the ordinance. Fill out the application, you say yes, no. And then they have to go, it goes before the council. If that gets approved, then it comes back to you to sign off, just the agreement.
And the past commissioners voted 3-0 in favor of setting aside money for this.
Yes.
And what I remember from that meeting is it was said, this amount that we're setting aside covers what they have historically received.
Historically received and given out.
Yeah. Okay. Is that money set aside in our current budget cycle?
It's in the casino revenue yet. It can't sign off. Stevens have that, I'm sorry. I can email it to you.
I think the base idea. It, it was 126 or 100 and some thousand that I think was set aside.
Sounds about right.
Right. And, you know, I, I've been pretty public with my feelings on, there's, there's three to four groups that I really believe in for this county. 4H, the, the Y, and the CAC. CS, is that right?
It's just a CAC.
Yeah, CAC.
It's on the, it's different.
I'm, I'm supporters of those three. So that's my opinion. You know, we have an application from the YMCA. We have an application from the CAC. You know, I've given you my opinion.
As far as what they requested, that's going to be what the council will approve, whether or not.
Yeah.
I mean, this is all new, so I'm, I'm.
Well, I know what the council had approved last time for the lot. I'll read, we'll start with. So the first one applicant we have in front of us is the Switzerland County YMCA. They have completed every necessary done by Ren, he's who's here.
Yeah, she's here.
And, and I verified with her before the meeting, the email that we had sent, she made lines through the items that she's going to cover with those dollars. I don't think in the past, we had the transparency from what I watched on meetings.
Right.
Of, you know, where some, some money was going. So I really appreciate you putting this here, saying, hey, we're just not taking X amount of dollars and throwing it in the wind.
It was their relationship to always be like.
Good. I appreciate that. The YMCA also enclosed or gave us their 2025 maintenance budget for. Basically, it's half of that amount. If I'm reading this correctly.
Mind if I approach, I don't care.
No, yeah, please. So I'm reading this here, minus 152,000.
That's the entire maintenance budget, but not everything in the maintenance budget is what we're asking for.
Right.
Some of those things are utilities. We're not asking for you guys to pay our utilities, but the county has already invested in the Y by helping us pay off our mortgage, from my understanding. And my feeling is that it's a sound investment for the county to help us to take care of our building. So we're asking for everything that's in our maintenance budget, having to do with our maintenance contracts and our projected maintenance expenses as well as wages towards our part-time maintenance manager. So that's what we're asking for.
Have you had a, an increase in donations, you know, this year?
I'll have to be honest that last year didn't turn out to be so great for donations. And I think a lot of that was that there was a lot of public uncertainty about the future of the Y. And people didn't know if they wanted to put money towards something that might not last.
Yeah.
But we're still here. And we've got help from the Indiana Y Alliance to organize our fundraising efforts this year. We're about to launch our annual campaign. And we also have help from the Indiana Y Alliance to secure some matching donations from the Lilly Grant, which is promising for our future. But we also have the here and now that we have to worry about. And it was, it was very traumatic for us to have an unexpected budget cut last year. So things are looking better for us. We're looking at our strategic plan and changing our business model a little bit. I'd love to come and talk to you guys about that more another time.
I think what a lot of people don't know, I was on the board of directors, you know, several years before I became a commissioner and resigned there. What most people in this community don't know is the original agreement for the YMCA, Doc, who's an originator, is sitting in the back, was that the, this is the smallest YMCA in the United States of America. I believe it still is today.
Full, full for full service.
Full service Y in the United States. And the agreement, however many years ago, what year that was, was that this county agreed to build this YMCA with full support for as long as it was here. In that contract, the lease agreement on that building is if the YMCA were to fold and close the doors, the building then belongs to the county commissioners, to the board of commissioners.
That's my understanding.
Yeah. And it becomes our problem as a, as a government. So I think it's extremely important to continue to support this YMCA, regardless of what other people think. And you're asking for $80,000.
That's right.
What, do you remember? I don't have that. There was an original budgeted amount at one time.
That's.
Yeah, the.
126.
That was full. Yeah, but the money that's in that account, my memory from watching those meetings is it covers the group that had historically been given money. It, it covers those amounts.
So is that us, 4H, CAC?
And.
For everybody? That's what.
For.
For everything.
Yeah. And historically, is this the amount? That's, that's the one I can't remember. No, historically, is this the amount that?
Historically, it was 100. And I think there was a time when the boat revenue was higher and the share was higher, but in recent years, it's been 100.
I know a few years ago, when county council, yeah, last year, when county council approved the funding of the YMCA, that was vetoed here in the commissioner's office. That was of 50 or 55,000, I think. I think 50.
It was considered low than what they.
Yeah. And that's what the Y at the time was trying to budget around 50. Then they ended up getting zero. Their old budget. And you're applying for grants and.
Yes.
Yeah.
Actively, and we're expanding our board so that we have access to more resources.
Are you on RMC electric there?
No, we use Duke. We did get a grant from RMC this year.
Okay, I was going to ask you, because I, I get different stuff and.
It wasn't a large grant, but it was. It was a good thing for us to have. It's for, for youth and we need more things for youth. That's what the Young Men's Christian Association was created for, to keep the youth off the streets and give them a brighter future.
Yeah. Last year the budget was 50,000. Or went to the grant. What'd you say it was again, 126? Yeah. You know, I'm pretty confident of another one coming, but I don't know, know the amount. I'm still vaguely familiar with the YMCA's budgeting. Six months in my head, so. I think 80,000 right now is probably pushing it for us with having 126 for the other entities. Kind of have 60 in my head. I don't remember that near. How are you for the remainder of the year?
I'm sorry?
How are you, how are you financially for the remainder of the year?
We're still undergoing our financial audit. We have to have an audit every year and submit it to YUSA so we can keep our charter. So I can't tell you with certainty how our finances look towards the end of the year. But like I said, we were impacted pretty greatly last year, so. We've, we've made a lot of cuts toward expenses that has helped us remain operational and we haven't had to cut many services.
Yeah. And, and you know, the, the thing that I don't think some people in the community understand, we have swim programs because of the YMCA. And, you know, you have, I don't know if Ripley County still uses it, Ohio County.
Right.
I don't know if they still use it.
Yes, we have contracts with South Ripley and Rising Sun, as well as our Switzerland County School Corporation.
Okay, with the, the, make that motion to approve the 60. I would want to see a Y go away and we'd have to tell middle schoolers and high schoolers that, hey, you know, you no longer have a swim program.
And it's not only that, it's also the fact that we live surrounded by water. And having been involved in teaching swim lessons personally, I can tell you a lot of kids don't even have. And, um, having been involved in teaching swim lessons personally, I can tell you a lot of kids don't even have the chance to learn how to swim. And they're terrified when they first get into a pool. And the chances of a child like that being able to self-rescue if they try it, getting in a pond are not very high.
Yeah, and I can tell you from my past on school, you know, happened the, uh. The different sport teams that could use the, use the gym, uh, school pays, but, uh. There's, uh, we have a shortage of gyms in this county.
Yes.
And, uh, we need, uh, we need the YMCA, so I'll make a motion to approve sixty thousand.
Before I second that, let me ask you one thing about this grants. What, what do the grants look like this year? Cause I know before when they cut to eighty, the eighty actually was going to be, would have faded a hundred and twenty thousand to the fifty percent match rate. Is that still the case? There used to be a grant that whatever you put up, they would match fifty percent of your budget. At one point, that was the case there. So when they cut that eighty thousand or whatever it was the last time.
It might be.
Cut a hundred and twenty.
Was this a, a COVID grant?
No, because I came, well. No, I came on post-COVID, so.
The only active grants that we are participating right now in are, um, our third year of the Lilly Support Staff Support Grant. Which helps us to pay the salary of our youth development director. And now we're gonna be able to participate in this twenty-five thousand. We don't necessarily get twenty-five thousand, but during our fundraising period. Certain donations fitting a criteria will be matched up to twenty-five thousand dollars.
Are there any grants that are? Majorly be reading your. Funds will be used to match grant funds, which pay eighty percent of payroll, eighty percent of equipment and supplies. So is there another?
Okay, that, that is the Lilly Youth Development Staff Support Grant, and, uh, it's a three-year grant. First, the first year it was eighty percent, and then it went down to the second year sixty percent, and then the third year twenty percent. So this is the final year of that grant.
Okay, alright, that makes sense.
Mm-hmm.
Is your location a, a stop for any of the, uh, summer feeding programs? I'm just curious.
We do have a summer camp that is run in partnership with, um, the school Excel After the Bell, Twenty First Century Grant is what funds it. And during the summer, the kids are fed by the cafeteria at Switzerland County School Corporation. Um, so all of the kids that get to participate in that camp for free, they do get fed. And that's, and they are transported, so they get picked up by buses in the morning. I know that's, that's a huge piece of the puzzle is actually making these kids able to have access to that. We've been partners with the school in delivering this camp for a long time.
Part of the, does the bus go all the way to Patriot?
It goes all around the county. There's a couple buses, picks them up right in front of their house, so it's very safe for them.
Yeah, the summer feeding programs, it's, it's extremely important for this county.
Yes, I know food insecurity is a, a little bit of a problem that we're trying to battle here.
You made a motion, so.
Yeah.
I'll second the motion, sixty thousand dollars for the YMCA. All in favor?
Thank you. What are the next steps?
You will have to, uh.
It'll be at the council meeting next Wednesday. We'll go before them.
Next Wednesday?
Next or, yes. Two days.
Next Wednesday and the second.
Second Wednesday, second Wednesday.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Second one we have in front of us is CAC Children's Advocacy Center of Southeast Indiana.
Nobody's here. Sarah asked if she needed to come and I put it up to her.
Um, but she's not here. The CAC of Southeastern Indiana, the child-friendly place created to minimize the trauma suffered by alleged victims of child abuse. The center is designed to use. Multidisciplinary team approach. Which facilitates the prevention, detection, and treatment of child abuse. I know the CAC very personally as a police officer and what they do for children. How important it really is and how successful the program is. And they are asking us for six thousand dollars tonight, so without any hesitation, I'll make a motion.
And, and I'll second that without any hesitation, this is extremely important for this county.
All in favor, six thousand dollars?
Aye.
You ready to circle back to?
Yeah, this, I don't see any problems for legality. Yeah, and I found the cost, that's up to thirty thousand. How's your, uh, success been with, uh, with Ohio County?
As far as.
You said you've been working with them the last, the last year.
I mean, we actually, we've been working with them for the last, I think, three years now.
Yeah.
And yeah, they've got, when it comes to budgeting, I mean, they've got, um. They have that conference financial plan in place, so it's really helped them with their planning. And I am gonna go talk to them in a couple weeks about the low boy tax because they already wanna know. You know, what should they be adopting? Should they go up to the MAC? So, yeah, it's been, it's been very stressful. We also work with Cater County on financial planning and, and Denver County was there for years on, on financial planning. We have to go financial planning every year.
If you're good.
Yeah, just leave.
For legality purposes.
For legality purposes, I don't see any problems with this, so.
Obviously, you as the elected, reach out to them, so you're comfortable. I'll make a motion to approve. I'll second that motion. All in favor? Do I just need to sign this one back, or?
There's actually two documents. There's a master of fund this is here and then let's go.
What's your, uh, yeah, Beth, what's your latest Indiana trust rate? Four point two?
Mm-hmm. It's, um.
You don't have to.
It is, uh. Four point two three eight.
Still have stuff left to.
In your overall funding?
Yeah. Where, where should we take this out of? It's up to thirty thousand dollars.
Keep in mind, there were two, so one is up to thirty and one is up to fifteen.
I think she was talking about the two, yeah.
The two different.
Company that's doing the job.
Council, so it goes through all that goes through there, right?
Yeah, everything off Indiana Trust and stuff goes right into.
Interesting.
Yeah. You know, interest off Indiana Trust, seventy-five, eighty thousand a month?
Um. It is, uh. Well, with the casino is around, uh, last month was forty-eight thousand. And, uh, the, the regular public index was around sixteen. But I just added some of their money to that.
Yeah.
We've got about a thirty-day window of the taxes that we've collected. So moved to the.
So. Okay, let's get through this now. You've got a, you just sparked a question.
So the, the question, the first question at hand is to pay you, so that. Say that the payments to come out of the interest that we're making, that they're gonna make for us, that would be, that's how we would pay the company back. Is out of the interest we're making. Councils would have to say that. So at the end of the day, that you're probably gonna have to go before them with what we've announced. For them to pay you off a grand day fa, pay them off a day fund based off the interest that we make. So you don't have to go before them, no.
I've got a question. This is off, off script, so, but since you're here, I was talking with one of the council members over the weekend. And I forget the name of the collection agency on taxes.
Right.
Trex, that's it. Does Ohio County use that?
Why should not know that? Yeah.
That, that's something that you that would have to start.
Yeah.
We started it, but something happened. I don't know exactly what happened, but we didn't, didn't follow through, but that's something. I talked to, um, the lady at, um, with the Indiana counties.
That's what the school uses. Patty's very topical. She's the one that brought it up to me, and I think, uh. Obviously, I don't know the cost, but I, I really think that's something we should jump all over.
I think they, I feel right, they take their fee out of what.
Right, and it goes on the, the people's taxes.
Yeah, we, we have a collection agency now mainly for, um, our personal property, the like entities, but. I don't really, I'm not even seeing very much return.
Okay.
So.
And I'm not topical on it, it just, uh, I started thinking about it after she said that.
We can, something like that in the clerk's office, collections of the, of tax papers, all the tickets to, and that's how they were paid. For the fee that is like. Without other communities.
Need to copy this.
He's got some separate ones.
I didn't mention anything about the, the pop flowers.
Yeah.
Put them in terms of whether they're. They didn't mention for what they're being collected, so they did. They took it out, so I would say, I would, I would think you need to go before them and ask them for their money. They took it out.
On Warfield Bennington? They did take some, but I can't remember exactly how much. I'd have to go back and look.
Those were the bucks we put on credit card. Over the cost of them.
Well, I mean, thirty-six hundred dollars.
Yeah, that's what I, they need, that's just, they haven't touched their casino revenue for any day or anything else, so.
We got a little bit, but I've never had seen this much yet.
Yeah, I would go. Let's have to go before Congress.
Yeah.
Ask for that. Your agreements, ma'am, are signed. She has them. She'll get them, copies of them and then send it back.
Yeah, I just need an email.
I don't have any board reports.
No, nothing. Um. Just one general comment. This is not directed at county highway, sheriff's department. If you're driving a county-owned vehicle, which is a taxpayer-owned vehicle, clean your pop cans, your food wrappers. Out of the vehicle, get your tools organized. So let's, let's get that done. That's all I have.
Make a motion to adjourn. Uh, second, all in favor?
Joe, is your head off, girl?
Yeah. He has the sign one and six.
Sorry, you what? Oh, God.
He's signed one, yeah. Oh, okay.
He's gotta be sorry.